Okay, we'll start our public caucus. Tonight, we have Leslie Callens of Scranton Tomorrow along with Michael Martin to give us an update. So the floor is yours. Is the mic on? Yeah, as if it's green.
How's that? Better? Well, it's been a while since I've been here in person, so thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to come and speak with council and provide you the updates of Scranton Tomorrow's economic and community revitalization efforts. We continue to utilize the state Main Street revitalization four-point approach as we also are following the strategy identified by the city of Scranton in the N R N plan for revitalization and the creation of Scranton Tomorrow organizing a future downtown Scranton Business Improvement District format. So tonight, Michael and I thought that what we would like to do is touch upon four of our main focus areas, and those are safe, clean, and green initiatives, downtown design elements, economic revitalization, and our business development efforts. And what we would like to do is outline a recent accomplishment of each of those aspects, as well as share with you an immediate future priority and goal. So I'll start with safe, clean, and green. Our safe, clean, and green activities are exactly that, safe, clean, and green, so that's an easy one. Many of you may remember our longstanding program, City Pride. And City Pride was facilitated by Scranton Tomorrow. It began in the early 1990s and continued for well over a decade. It was a citywide beautification and cleanup effort. As the years progressed and our staffing capacity became limited, and obviously financial implications of running such a citywide program, we really focused on City Pride as a downtown cleanup initiative. During COVID, we realized that there became a window of time where community citizens wanted to be re-engaged. They wanted to get back into those volunteer aspects. They wanted to contribute to Scranton as a community as a whole. And when we realized this, we started internally saying, well, how can we help address this need and this opportunity for us to bring the community together once again? And that is a skill set that Scranton Tomorrow has had since its creation in 1992, and that is really bringing partners to the table and bringing the community together to address an immediate need. So in a conversation with Jesse Aragot from Neighbor Works of Northeastern Pennsylvania, we were having a chat about how collectively can our two organizations partner? And it is one organization, a nonprofit within our community, that we actually never had a partnership over the 30 years that we're in business and the 40 years that they are in business. So we started to talk about City Pride and how it worked in the past, in the early 90s, in, you know, into the early 2000s. And we decided that with the staff capacity and the financial resources of both of our organizations, that we once again could bring this back to a citywide program. So in 2021, we rebranded, re-energized, reinvigorated City Pride, and it became Scranton City Pride, a project of Scranton Tomorrow and Neighbor Works Northeastern Pennsylvania. We had a significant turnout. We were very pleased with the results, and therefore, for 2022, we decided, let's continue this wonderful partnership. So this year, we brought in a number of fabulous partners. The program lasts one week. We just completed the program within the last few weeks. This year, we had 33 projects throughout the entire city of Scranton. We had 597 volunteers show up to help. That is double our numbers from last year. We had about 240, so we were thrilled with almost 600 community volunteers. That equates to 905 volunteer hours, which is huge, and that equates to $27,105 in economic impact for the city as a whole. And that number was calculated as per theindependentsector.org, which quantifies volunteer contributions. So the meaning of that number and the importance of that number is if the city were to, or if Scranton Tomorrow or Neighbor Works were to hire someone to manage those numbers, they would have, we would have spent $27,105 in order to do that. So we are extremely grateful to the community stepping up to the plate in the fashion that they did. Also, an important number is 223 bags of trash, which equates to nearly 9,000 pounds of litter. Significant number. So we were really thrilled with the development of the program. This year, also, the program expanded in a really important and, I think, noteworthy way. And I think it is probably one of the most great accomplishments of the program this year. We're going to expand with this aspect next year. We realized also during COVID that there are organizations and individuals within our community that have been very sheltered because of COVID regulations and didn't have a lot of one-on-one opportunities to, you know, get back out into the community. So we developed programs that we engaged every resident of the Geno Murley Veterans Center. And we planted plants in partnership with Net Credit Union and delivered a plant to every single resident within the building. We worked with a number of the veterans. We had a great time. It was a great program. We did similar type of aspects with the Friendship House, which, as we all know, is moving into the downtown in the very near future. And it was a great opportunity for us to pull them in to the City Pride programming. We also worked with the Catherine McCauley Center, the Scranton School for the Deaf, actually right outside the doors of City Hall. Steve Ward, our Safe, Clean, and Green team leader, developed a program with the Scranton School for the Deaf where he went actually to the school. We donated one of our personal planters that we purchased to the school, and he went up and worked with the students and taught them horticulture and how to plant flowers and how to care for them. In return, they taught him sign language. So it was just a great mix. Then Steve brought the children downtown and during the week of City Pride, because they tended to their flowers for many, many weeks. During City Pride, he transported all of their flowers down here and the location between City Hall and Fidelity Bank, where all those beautiful flowers are, the children from the Scranton School for the Deaf planted during City Pride. So we also worked with the Center for Independent Living and the Outreach, and they did amazing plantings and had a great horticulture and educational experience. So what we would like to do is capitalize on that for 2023. We are already talking with Neighbor Works about our plans. We're already starting plans for City Pride 2023, and we really want to continue to make the program not only beautification, not only cleanup, but have these much deeper elements of education, horticulture, and, most importantly, inclusion. So we're very proud of the collective efforts of Neighbor Works, Scranton Tomorrow, and all the community partners that stepped up to the plate this year. So I thought that was certainly a noteworthy program to share with you. As far as our primary goal, and the committees, each committee that I'm talking about has multiple goals and multiple accomplishments, but we selected one from each committee to share with you tonight. Our immediate goal is the creation of the Center Street Living Alley. And we thank you very much for voting on that legislation, allowing the city of Scranton to close that street, for Center Street, between Adams Avenue and North Washington. First and foremost, we were very concerned about pedestrian safety along that. It's a very narrow roadway, and it was two-way traffic and often served only for the purpose of a shortcut to other streets. So by the end of the month, we will be working with, we are working currently with the city, but by the end of the month, you will see temporary barriers that will be positioned at the ends of both of Center Street in order to prepare people properly that that street will be formally closed in a more permanent manner. We're also working with the city on the aspects of the timeline for the actual revitalization. So I'm sure that when I come back next time, I'll have a lot of great information for you on the redevelopment of Center Street. Now I'm going to ask Michael Gil-Martin, Scranton Tomorrow's board chair, to talk to you a little bit about our design committee.
Thank you, Leslie. Do I need to move that, or my goodness? Okay, good. In my involvement with Scranton Tomorrow, I did a lot of committee work as board member and tried to help out where I could. But when I transitioned into chair of the board, one of the goals that I had for myself was to try to formulate a plan and a way that we could bring more attention to public art in Scranton. And in particular, public art of a high quality and a sustainability that is a hallmark for our organization. And we were, the board authorized the formation of Scranton Tomorrow Mural Arts Committee that included Richard Leonori, Steve Ward, Tara Smith, Tony Pat, Mike Toledo, Rosa Randazzo, and myself. And we began to formulate plans and strategies to create opportunities where mural art could be presented to the city. We have a great sense of belief that it is an economic driver. It's going to bring people to the downtown. If you're presenting quality artwork on a large scale, that's going to attract people's attention. So far, we've accomplished, as the muralized program is moving along, two murals. One is the MLK mural, Martin Luther King, a mural dedicated to Dr. Martin Luther King that was installed in July of 2021 and dedicated. It's at the corner of Adams Avenue and Mulberry Street on the Scartelli Building. It's the cooperative work of two artists who have degrees from Marywood College and are successful in their own right, Eric Broussard and Emmanuel Wisdom. The second mural that we have accomplished and dedicated occurs on Penn Avenue in the 300 block, which is historically the heart of vaudeville in Scranton. And a mural design was created by Joel Carson Jones that signifies a typical act of vaudeville was acrobats and rope dancers, wire walkers, if you will. And the theme of that mural, called Danseur de Cord, portrays a female figure in costume dancing on a very thin rope across an open space. That mural was completed in the fall of 2021, attracting attention and bringing people out to see them. As far as our goals are concerned, we are in the negotiation stage and planning to accomplish two other murals in the downtown. We're hoping to do one in 2022 in the fall and another in the spring/summer of 2023. That will be, again, economic drivers to our city that will bring people downtown and add to the level of quality and sustainability. When we set out to install a mural in the downtown, we're working with artists who are using materials that have a sustainability for a period of 20 years. We also acquire a commitment from the building owner that the artwork will become part of the building legally, so that if the building were to be sold at any point during a period of time going forward, the commitment is made to that the artwork would remain in place as part of the building. And that is a good point of our program, so that we're not doing anything that's going to create blight. And we hope to have more information about the upcoming murals. I'm not saying a great deal about it. It has been written about in the paper, and I think more will come as the plans and the negotiations are finalized.
Perfect. Thanks. Thanks, Michael. Our Economic Revitalization Committee also has a number of very impactful priorities. But the one that I wanted to talk about today, our most recent accomplishment, which is in the final draft form currently, is our Downtown Master Plan. And a few months ago, I did drop one off to city council. If you have not seen that document, I'd be more than happy to get some additional copies to you. The master plan, the purpose of it, is to have one formal document that could be utilized by anyone if they're looking to invest in downtown Scranton, or if they are looking to identify what areas are priorities currently or areas that may need improvement and future investment. It also can be used, and has been used actually in the draft form by the city of Scranton, in providing detailed information for state and federal grant applications. So before it's actually even finalized, it has been utilized by a number of organizations. The master plan development was determined by utilizing all of those plans that have been out there for a number of years. So we pulled in the multimodal plan, the bicycle plan, the ABC plan by the Chamber of Commerce, traffic studies, you name it. Every plan out there, we have provided to the consulting firm that prepared the document. We then had stakeholders and stakeholder meetings held where priorities were pulled from those documents that are still relevant for today's, you know, situation within the downtown and priority areas of development. So the master plan has the top five big ideas, and it's a fluid document, so it can continue to be updated. It's, we're not saying, here's one document, and now, next year, we have to recreate it if other investments areas are identified. This is a very fluid, workable document where we can go back to the drawing board and add projects. So we actually have already done that. There are a few development projects that came after the plan was in the development phase. So we sat with those developers, got more detailed information on what their needs are as far as their revitalization aspects. You know, is it sidewalks? Is it lighting? Is it pedestrian walkability? Is it biking paths? What is it to bring people to their new investment? So those elements will be added into the plan. So that is something that is forthcoming with the final document, but if, once again, if you would like to see the final draft, I can certainly get that to you. As far as the economic revitalization goal, it's a goal that I think we've been waiting for, for a very long time, working on for a very long time, but that is obviously the Pocket Park revitalization on the corner of Linden and Wyoming Avenues. This, I always say, is a great example of private-public partnership. There have been, it's been a great partnership between the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, and Scranton Tomorrow. Also, so many organizations stepped up to the plate to help make this happen within the city. So there are a number of firms, from remediation to design to, you know, architects that have come to the table, and we are very excited that the final draft of the bid packet is currently at the city. They are reviewing it as a second look to make sure that we are abiding by all of the city bidding regulations. Even though Scranton Tomorrow really only needs to abide by the state regulation because we have a state grant, we want to make sure that we are abiding by the city regulations as well. So we have asked the city to review the documents prior to us putting them out for publication. So they are currently in the process of doing that. They received the documents yesterday, and so we're excited about that. The tentative plan, and this is purely tentative in case we need to go back and make some revisions, and we're hoping that we don't, we hope we covered everything, but if by chance, this may change, but this is the tentative plan. The full bid packets will be advertised somewhere between 7:24 and 7:27. The pre-bid onsite walkthrough will be tentatively 8:1, and the bids will be due tentatively 8:11. There then will be a process where all of the bids will be reviewed. We have professionals within the area that have stepped up to the plate who obviously are not construction individuals. They are architects, engineers, planners, that will be assisting us with the selection of the company that will receive the award. So we are very excited that this is finally coming to the point of construction, and we're really looking forward to this being a wonderful asset for the community as a whole. As we know, it's been a blighted space for well over a decade and certainly an eyesore, and we're looking forward to a beautiful community green space and adding this as a city asset. And then last, lastly, I would like to talk about our Business Development Committee. We continue to provide multiple marketing opportunities for our entire downtown business district. We also continue to do that for free. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are not membership-based. Everything we do, our daily work, one-on-one work with the small business community, all of our promotions, all of our marketing efforts, all of our activities that we encourage people to come downtown to shop, dine, recreate, all are free of charge to the entire business community. And we feel great value in that, to make sure that we're really helping the businesses. We're helping them where their budgets are always tight, and we recognize that, so we continue that, you know, process. So we will continue our seasonal marketing activities, and as we approach the fall, we'll have many new ones that will be on the books. As far as our goal, we're excited to announce that we are bringing back the Electric City Classic, the Criterium Pro Amateur Bike Race. Our inaugural Electric City Classic was held in 2019. It was a two-day event, one day which is within the downtown and the second day which is in the hill section. Due to COVID, we did not have the event in 2020, unfortunately, and we did a very condensed version in 2021 with only the hill climb in the hill section. This year, we are very excited to bring it back, August 27th, in downtown Scranton. It is a closed-loop, as I said, pro-amateur cycling race. We have hundreds of racers that came to our community in 2019, and they are from across the globe. We had individuals from numerous countries. So it's really exciting that we're bringing not only the racer, they bring their associated teams, they bring their family members. It's a great economic boost, economic driver for the city of Scranton as a whole. So August 27th, downtown Scranton, that is for pro and amateur cyclists only, except it's a great opportunity for the community to come out. The event is free of charge. It is family-oriented. We have thousands of cowbells, so when you come down and the racers are zipping by you, everyone is, you know, waving their cowbells, so it just has great positive energy. It is also all about health and wellness. And we are very pleased that this year, Guy Singer is our presenting sponsor, and the Wright Center has also come back this year as a supporting sponsor, and they were our inaugural presenting sponsor. So it's all about health and wellness of our community, so we really encourage everyone to come out to the event. On the 28th, it's the community piece on the cobblestone road on Olive Street between Irving and Taylor. So the hill is literally like this. Not only do we have community cycling, so if you own a bike and you own a helmet, you can register and participate in that event. You can bring your family out. The neighborhood loves it. We have neighbors that are sitting in their lawn, having picnics with their cowbells. It's just a great, once again, community builder, neighborhood-building event. So we would encourage everyone to come to the hill section on the 28th and share in the excitement of that event, too. So with that said, if there are any questions about any of Scranton Tomorrow's projects, scrantonTomorrow.org is our website, and electriccityclassic.org has all the information for the 2022 Electric City Classic. So I hope that we covered, you know, a good amount of our accomplishments as well as our future goals. So once again, thank you for allowing us to share.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. First of all, thank you again for coming and updating us with all the great things that you do and keep up the great work.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate that, and we believe in partnerships, and so that's how we believe that progress will continue, is by building those partnerships and maintaining them. So we appreciate that, and we have great community partners.
Thanks. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
My one comment. The question I was going to ask was going to be about the Pocket Park. We had a lot of questions from the public during our meetings here about the Pocket Park, and I was glad that you put a timeline together. I'm glad that the city has the packet. I'm glad that we're doing the walkthrough on the first, and then the bids will be received by the 11th, so mid-August, we should be hearing what's going on and when we're going to start the work there.
Yes, you should. And I'd be more than happy to keep Frank in the loop and updated on the process to make sure that those become the firm dates, but right now, we're believing those are the dates. But like I said, I want to say tentative, just in case something happens, but yes, I'd be more than happy to keep you updated on that. It has been quite a long process, but when there's a situation with remediation, that's not unexpected.
Yeah, I would say that's the one question we had from the public was, what is the timeline going to be? What, when is, when are we looking at completion? When are we looking at starting? So thank you for that.
Yes, sure. No problem.
I agree that information is helpful to have, and we appreciate you coming tonight and providing us with an update. It has been some time, and it's exciting to see what Scranton Tomorrow has been up to and what you have planned for the future. And I'm happy to see that things are moving along now on the Pocket Park.
We are, too.
And I'm hopeful for that completion in the fall time so that people can enjoy it.
Right. Thank you.
Leslie, I didn't hear you speak about fundraisers that Scranton Tomorrow has run. I know you and I were involved with the Winter in the City for probably 20 years.
Yes, at least.
I'm just wondering about, I know you're 501(c)(3), so what type of fundraising activities do you at Scranton Tomorrow do to try to, obviously, you're doing a lot of marketing for downtown businesses. I'm just wondering how you're able to afford those activities? What type of fundraising activities?
That's a great question, Bill, and I'm sure Michael will have a lot of input on that as president. So Winter in the City was our annual fundraiser. We raised a significant amount of money that would carry us through for quite some time. When COVID hit, obviously, we were unable to have Winter in the City because it brought hundreds of people together to share in the celebration of food from throughout the city that was donated. And it was a great event. We had great music. It really was a great celebration. During COVID, quite honestly, and I don't think Scranton Tomorrow is any different than any other nonprofit that is out there, except the fact that we are non-membership-based, which is a tough one. So during COVID has been quite challenging. We have continued to stay the course, and we recently had a great fundraiser with Pizza by Papas that Michael had organized with the owners of Papas, who are very, very generous. So we did have a fundraiser recently, a pizza night, and we have a number of smaller fundraisers like that where people can support a local business, and then that business will provide a donation back to Scranton Tomorrow based on the income from that day. So that is right now how we're doing our fundraisers, obviously being very aware of the fact that the business community is struggling. We don't want to tax them and put extra burden on them. And I honestly, during COVID, we really focused on providing the services to the community first and ourselves second. And I know that might sound funny, but we really worked on the Electric City Connection Project with the University of Scranton and Friends of the Poor, where we raised tens of thousands of dollars for those that were suffering from food insecurity. The same with Meals for Medics, which was a program with Guy Singer, where we fed third-shift medical workers, and we raised quite a nice amount of money to help do that. So we focused So we focused really on those things, and we have very strong community partners that have been very supportive of us. And obviously, we have applied for every single grant during COVID that we were eligible for in order to maintain our staff to get the things done that we feel as an organization that's been in existence since 1992 needs to continue to do.
Thank you. Does the Electric City Classic generate any funds for you, or does it actually cost you?
Well, the year one, no, and we anticipated that, you know, just breaking even on that. We're hoping that this year, we will make a profit on that. But, you know, once again, we're going, we're pushing those sponsorships, so there are great sponsorship opportunities, and we still have those open. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also mention that as far as fundraising goes, in past years, typical with other community organizations, Scranton Tomorrow would conduct an annual fund drive to generate money, which we have done. We've also relied frequently on our board members to share financial support to the organization to help drive some of our projects a little forward. In more recent times, as a nonprofit, Scranton Tomorrow participates in NIPA Gives, and that has also been helpful to us to raise funds for some of our project work.
And Bill, I'll just add one other thing there also. You know, the University of Scranton has been a wonderful support and partner of ours as well with contribution each year, as well as the city of Scranton.
Thanks for all you're doing for the city. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, comments?
I just want to say thank you for coming in. Thank you for all you're doing. And if you would, just keep us updated on the Pocket Park to make sure that's hitting that time schedule.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
We'll be back for our regular meeting at 6:30.